Recording in progress.
And I know that this is official now, we heard that sound. So greetings everybody and let's kick this off. Have our city clerk call the.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson. And Mayor Roberson.
And the mayor will join us as soon as he can.
All right.
Okay, great. Clementine, if we could move to the pledge of allegiance, if you could provide the flag on the screen, it'd be great.
Absolutely, hold on one moment.
Dan, if there's some technical problems.
I have to unmute myself.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So the first item and the only item tonight is the study session is staff presentation. Receive a presentation on mutually monitored. A united governance model. So let's dive right into it and tonight there won't be any gen items where we're taking a vote, but this is for information purposes tonight to learn from staff as we prepare to go into districts to represent our fine city and make sure that we recognize the entire community. So Hans, let me turn it over to you for the first item.
Yes, thank you, thank you Vice Mayor Smith, Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Hafa. I've thought long and hard about my introduction to this topic and if you have seen me in action over the past years in front of city council from time to time, I always quote a favorite book of mine, which has a lot of wisdom for management in there, especially for city managers. That book is Alice's Adventures in Wonderland by Lewis Carroll. And I thought I start with a reading out of that for you. And that will hopefully perfectly set up this discussion about mutual Monterey and what we try to accomplish today. So here we go, it's in chapter two of Alice's Adventures in Wonderland by Lewis Carroll. Down the rabbit hole and another moment down went Alice after it, never once considering how in the world she was to get out of, to get out again. The rabbit hole went straight unlike the tunnel for some way and then dipped suddenly down so suddenly that Alice had not the moment to think about stopping herself before she found herself falling down what seemed to be a very deep well. Either the well was very deep or she fell very slowly because she had plenty of time as she went down to look about her and to wonder what was going to happen next. So that is, I think, a good introduction to the topic to tonight. It's and for those viewers who just are tuning in, this is not the library board meeting. This is still a council study session, but but it's 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 basically a good introduction to the topic. We are switching in November for the first time to bring on board district based elected council members. And there is some sort of a rabbit hole here that we really don't know exactly how will this affect our day to day governance? And so our our council meeting to today, our study session today, and I see council member Williamson is joining us right now. Our council session today will address some of those challenges that were brought up also in front of our council when we discussed at length during five scheduled meetings, the transition from at large elections to district based elections that people were just asking questions and and were concerned, raised concerns about are we still looking out for Monterey or are we just getting divided up in district based thoughts and district based intentions? Shall the budget then be divided up in districts? If somebody gets their potholes fixed and you Monterey, will another district claim that we are neglecting them? So a lot of those questions are were addressed during this process and around that time when we were looking at that. And that came to me and said, well, you know, other cities who have transitioned to to district based elections, what what the general tenor there is. Get your current council together, the at large council together and see what they think about this and how they address those those topics. And stick your head together with them and then once we are switching to district based election, this may or may not be as some sort of iterative process. But lay the foundation now how you will, how we will, you the council, how we will the staff and the council then work together towards our overall well being as a city of Monterey. And so to today, we 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 put together a presentation and a few background elements that are already contained in the agenda report to just have that conversation with you. I'll listen to you council and see how how we are falling down that rabbit hole while looking around and then seeing where we will hopefully land. So with that, I'll ask Ned to to take it take over and introduce the topic.
Great, thank you so much Hans and we plan to go through two different parts for today's presentation and overview of what mutually Monterey, the unified governance model is why we're having this conversation with you today and then go through a little bit of a dialogue to gather feedback from all of you as we go on this journey together. And we'll first kick it off by talking about the purpose of today's study session is to have a dialogue to determine how effective governance principles and practices can be maintained under this new district based election system that we'll be transitioning to starting this November. And one of the common questions we've been asked over the last few days, especially since this agenda packet was published is why now when we have not yet held district based elections? And Hans mentioned that it's because one of the best practices is for city councils to discuss these approaches in the early stages of district based elections. We've seen that our community members have been talking about districts, what does this mean? And having those conversations earlier on can can help us through the process and council can choose to enter into further discussion as well. According to the League of California Cities during these transitions, it's very common for formerly at large council members to not radically shift their behavior and mindset to look at interests of the cities as a whole. But there is a concern that large culture shifts in governance occurs when new council members are elected who have never won an at large seat. I was just speaking to a colleague of mine, city manager from a Bay Area city earlier today about how one out of their five council members has never won an at large seat and that person's mentality is very much focused and narrow minded on on only their districts views. And that does become a challenge when we look at trying to solve the city's problems as a whole. So that's why we're having that discussion today. So we have three goals for you this afternoon. The first is to review the city's decision to move to district based elections. We'll try to cover that as briefly as possible. We'll talk a little bit about best practices among cities and have a discussion with council and then introduce a proposed concept for you, which is mutually Monterey, a unified governance framework. So let's talk briefly about the transition to district based elections. As many of you know, last fall, we received a letter from LULAC and in the spring of 2022, the council adopted an ordinance and finalized a map for us to for the city of Monterey to move to district based elections. This is a phased approach, so starting in 2022, districts one and two council member seats will be up for election. The other two seats would remain at large. And then districts three and four council member seats would be elected by district for districts three and four. And this is a graphic of the what was called at the time the dolphin map that was adopted by the city council. And I think most of you are familiar with this and community members should be as well. And as a recap, the purpose of having district based elections was to ensure that the ability of minority groups to elect representatives of their choice is not impaired as a result of vote dilution. That's one of the reasons why District Four has one of the most diverse demographics in all of the districts. Also, it's intended to be for election purposes. That's one of the conversations that we had and that council, all of you had with the community was the concern that if we go to district based elections, will the city's interests as a whole be considered in the future? Are we going to be myopically focused on on the specific districts one, two, three, and four? It was reiterated from council that we wanted to have, make sure that this wouldn't change how we viewed the community and how we made decisions and that community division doesn't occur as a result of district based thinking. So let's talk briefly about the best practices among cities transitioning to district based elections. There are four elements of effective city councils, according to the California nonprofit Institute for Local Government. This is a organization that is represented and is apparent organizations include the League of California Cities and the California State Association of Counties. And the four elements include, first of all, having a unity of purpose. The second is a positive governance culture. Third, clear roles and responsibilities. And fourth is norms, protocols, and policies. I I think city manager Hans Suessler and myself, we and our exec team, we would argue that our council has all four of these. It's the question is how do we continue to have this as we transition to district based elections? And as we work towards that unified vision, reviewing what those existing and potential governance norms look like, what the potential policy impacts look like? And then what does this unified governance framework look like? And when we say unified, it goes back to this mutually Monterey concept. So what we'd like to do for this segment of the program is turn it back over to your council. We have a few questions that we've posed and these are questions that ILG, when they've had facilitated efforts with city councils that have made this transition to district based elections, they've asked. So and we've modified some of these questions as well. But what I'd like to do is quickly transition over to a virtual useful pad, if you will, and we're going to ask you some questions and get feedback from from council. So let me share the correct screen and we'll go over to the the word document. And hopefully you all see the screen. Does everyone see this? Yep, awesome. So first question, big picture question is, is election by district the same as governing by district? And how do we maximize the opportunities of having district based elections, but also minimize the risks? And it's a free for all, so anyone can go first. House Member Hafa, hello.
Thanks, Ed. So the reality is people are going to be elected by citizens in their district. And those citizens are going to expect those district elected council members to represent their interests and and that's not an unreasonable expectation, right? You know, somebody who represented the city of Monterey on the MPUSD school board, which is districted. My approach was to balance my responsibility and duty to represent, you know, Monterey and that particular district as well as to look at the whole district. I think it's something where it helps if if there are, if there's a shared vision and goals, I think that can help to kind of always refocus the body back upon our shared vision and goals. I think it's going to be incumbent upon the council as we add new members that are elected by district to have retreats where we revisit our, you know, mission, vision and goals, our drivers. Because it really has to be, you know, a shared vision. I think this council's done that. And by by and large, I think we share a common vision and I think that's why we've worked together pretty well. I think it's going to take special leadership from the mayor, whoever they are, because they are the one person who will be elected at large. And and again, in my experience on the MPUSD board, the leadership of the chair made a difference in terms of things like making sure that everybody was heard, making sure that oh boy, what's the word, that the culture of the board or the council in this case is one of mutual respect, even where people may disagree. Yeah, so those are just a few of my initial thoughts. I think it, we can't expect there not to be some push for these for representatives to strongly advocate for perhaps the unique needs of their district. And then it just becomes a matter of people sort of negotiating and and looking at our shared vision and and trying to make the best decision that that council in the future can make. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hafa, very helpful and the perspective from serving on the MPUSD board definitely has parallels with our transition. You're absolutely right, the special leadership from the mayor and I would also argue city, you know, city managers, city manager as well, and the executive team as we work through challenges with constituents and needs. Who also has some things I'd like to share on the specific big picture question?
And that, if you'll help me pick up anyone that's raising their hand. Seeing that council members are all down. And did you have some thoughts? Dan, we can't hear you.
I said not yet. I I do want to say I did sit on or I didn't sit on, but I was a part of MPUSD when Alan was a board member. And I know that it was a very difficult time during that particular time in our district. And I want to say that what Alan just just mentioned was exactly what we we did to bring that that district together. And and a lot of that had to do with Alan, Alan's leadership, I just have to say that. So I I think what Alan said is perfectly said. So I I can't add to that, Alan, because I know that that's the experience you had in MPUSD. And so I I think it's a, it's well said.
Yeah, if I could add some thoughts to the picture. I was trying to visualize this look like when we are with operations together or if I was communicating with the constituent from one particular area of the community, but especially, you know, now it would be District Two if I were to prevail in the next election. So I look at this as kind of an overlay. And if you look at, you know, you know, 1,000 foot and 5,000 foot and and 10,000 foot and 30,000 foot. But I think that the concentration would always naturally be to your neighbors, your close proximity in your district. This piece that we talked about when we were going through the district processing was the community of interest. So it's the district that has association activity through neighborhoods, parks, churches, your neighbors, businesses that you may shop at, ball fields, schools, so it's that closer, it's that thousand foot level. And if you go out, we certainly have to have a responsibility to the neighboring districts. So it's not just the only district council that's important is my district. That's not true. It's what's to the east, what's to the west, what's north, what's the south geographic, whoever I'm close to, because all of us are navigating on the same streets to get through to a district. It's not like our districts in some communities, they're miles apart where they're they're distinctly larger and they're distinctly further apart. Our districts really aren't. Our districts are right next to each other. And we're all sharing the same kinds of things that I would call is the community of interest. So I think it's thinking of it like a planning overlay, if you will. You have lots and sites and and you have specific information, but then you you go further out and it gets bigger and you go further out and it gets bigger and it's the whole city. We're all going to be looking at a budget that applies to all of the districts. We're all going to be looking to leverage and navigate through our city manager and staff, the citywide services. And it certainly, it can't be portioned out, it can't be divided out. We have to have the mindset that this is a budget for the entire city. And certainly a city like ours that has a large budget with a lot of services, I just don't think anybody's going to get left out. I think that there's going to be a concentrated effort on public works, transportation, on roadway systems, on parks, sports center, the central areas that we all participate in, I think are going to go across all the districts. So looking at it like from an operational question, which is the next question, what is required? I would say I hope not much changes in terms of conduct and behavior at the council when we're representing our district at the same time representing the larger community. So I want to jump to and add a bullet point to what's required. What's required to change under district election? I think the mechanical piece has changed. That's the process by which everyone gets elected except for the at large mayor. So I hope we don't have any other changes, frankly. But from an operational side, I think we probably hear a lot as we move forward from the city manager and staff is how the communications changes, how we're all informed. The information is not just given to the district, but is given to the all city council members that we don't need the councilman or councilperson out of the process just because maybe it's District Three, but you're in District One. And then all of a sudden we have silos. So I think operationally, we want to make sure that we guard against creating a silo and we don't exclude a particular district councilperson just because some things happened in another district. I think the communications needs to go across all all the reforms to make sure everybody is is informed. So there aren't any blind spots in the communications, the knowledge, the consideration of that district that may be just one street away from my district. But I still want to know what's happening in the other district because it's still part of the community. So I hope there's not a lot of changes, but operationally, I think that there will be some nuances of how staff will handle that.
Ed, if I can add on to that, Tyler, I can't see if you're raising your hand. So if you don't mind, I can just, if you don't mind, I'd just like a comment on a couple of things that Ed said. Or do you have something to start off with and I can go back to Ed?
I have some thoughts, but go ahead.
So Ed, you make a good point about overlaying on neighborhoods because some of our districts do overlay, meaning that a council member will represent two two neighborhoods. I mean, that that does happen. So obviously those two council members are going to have to work together because they they're in the same neighborhoods. So the one thing I wanted to mention, I thought was very interesting, was about identifying citywide goals that Alan talked about, but that could also be projects or any type of project that we can identify these, like for instance, the, even though the sports. That we can identify these, like for instance, the even though the sports center may sit in one district. We all, as a council, have to agree that that sports center is really much like the NCIP. It's like a city project, not just that council member's uh, sports center. And and there are probably multiple places on the city that you can identify that, especially parks. Because parks are used throughout the city, throughout uh, our our residents or city halls, another one. So even though those those citywide um, areas of um, or projects of the of the city. Sit in each one of our districts, um, they are still recognized as the ci- the city as a whole. Um, and the second thing is, um. If I can remember what I was going to say, um. Well, I forgot. Yeah, well, Tyler, go ahead. I know there's one other. I'm just going to interrupt you, Tyler, if I remember.
Yeah, no.
Your moment.
No, absolutely. Yeah, please, please do, because I don't want you to lose your thought. I want I want it to build.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Tyler.
Um, you know, my my thought, and and I think of all of my colleagues here have hit on it, is just the need for folks to come in and. And I think it will naturally happen, um, but somehow I I think, you know, also. Folding it into our our culture when we're onboarding um, new electeds. Um, to somehow communicate with them. The need of the entire community and 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 making sure that's baked in, right? So it'd be wonderful if we were able to, um. You know, I I don't know what that looks like wi- with the council between now and the election, but you know, maybe it's just. Um, making sure that they have access to our value drivers, mission, vision. Um, and that's given to them as part of a welcome packet um, upon entering office and and coming into the city. Um, and and making that just part of the culture so that we 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 ensure that folks from the get-go are established in a way. That that makes them think of the city overall, as opposed to maybe what occurred during the the election process and. And having to listen to their um, constituents within their district. So I think that's just kind of the the little piece of additional feedback that I'll provide at this point.
And I. I do remember what I was going to say, so.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Tyler. So I I think that at this point, we have to remember why we went into districting. And it's not to represent each one of the different districts. But it's so that we can have people on council that are inclusive to their areas. So it's not necessarily, uh. You know, you're representing this district and that's why you're on the council. You're still looking at the dis- as the city as a a one big. Uh, a unit, but however, you're here on the council to represent um, at least that section of the city. Not necessarily advocating for the city, but. We just needed more people from around the city instead of just uh, one area. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I think I think the overall spirit of us moving to districts is to make sure that uh, border to border. Anybody that wants to go through the process and the work to get elected. Um, certainly is not left out. And so I think the district process, if it's done anything, probably. Has gotten some folks um, aware, alive, that paid attention and maybe they'll express some interest in. And getting involved. Then it's not just at the council level, it's parks and rec, it's ARC, it's planning commission. There's a tremendous initiative that comes from. Uh, a community like Monterey that's actually not just run by this council. Certainly, we make the votes. We have a a wonderful staff. It's the city manager is um, supervising all of the moving parts, but. We couldn't do this without all of those other members that that step up and choose to serve on boards and commissions. Um, so I I hope that that doesn't change. I hope that we still have a heavy level of engagement. Um, I wa- I want to go back to something, since this is a session where we have an opportunity to link and connect when someone says something. It's worth a comment and and then it reminds us of a thought. I want to use the model of the NCIP process. Um, so I was, I was reflecting on um, the district that I live in. And was thinking in terms of, well, how many districts do I have? How many churches do I have? And I mentioned this at the last council meeting. But um, to to represent all of those neighborhood improvement. Um, areas, it still requires a lot of work on a council member. So it doesn't just stop at the border of where my district will be. Um, because if you think of a neighborhood association. That I have a portion of it. Let's say I have thirty percent of it, but the other seventy percent is in a different district. So that requires me to have an obligation to be engaged in both districts. And their board and the other city council member, as Dan has mentioned. So you really can't just parse this down to small segments. Um, it's easier to work smaller workings. But I think the thing I hope that still stays is that. It is a community-wide thought process with maybe a link to make connections to the other. Associations in the other districts. Uh, but I think the model that we have is the way the neighborhood association comes together to. Consider the voting carefully and navigate through the issues of um. Competing interests and limited resources. Uh, but we shouldn't look at this as a uh. I don't know, parochial, uh, like this is the line and this is where it stops. I just think we have some great models with the neighborhood. Um, improvement program and the way that they operate. And I think that's going to drive the way a district. Councilperson is going to have to function because we're all going to have in our districts, multiple. Neighborhood associations, multiple business associations. Um, we all come together using uh, churches and parks and and the same roads. So I I just hope that it's. Like has been said, the onboarding helps future council members. And we demonstrate that and we mentor that by the conduct that happens with each and every council as it moves forward every two years.
Ed, uh, can I, I add two additional here?
Yeah, go for it, Tyler.
Uh, so so one is, I think, getting to this idea of the of the NCIP and what that means. And obviously, right now. There are some neighborhood associations that bleed into um, multiple districts and. And I, one of the pieces of feedback that I heard from um, individuals involved with the NCIP. Is just questioning what the future of that looks like. And so I am not necessarily advocating for a specific. But I I would just say that it's important for the council now and in the future after the election. To stay open and in dialogue with the community around what that looks like. So. I I think it's, I I think the point that I'm trying to make is that it's okay. For things to change and for things to shift around a little bit. I think one of the things that I've heard as a potential idea. Was, do we reestablish the neighborhood associations in a way that align with districts? And again, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just, I'm just. I identifying the need for the council and the leadership within the city. To stay flexible and mobile and and open in communication with the public around what the future of of this experience looks like together. Um, and then and then the other point that I would make, and it's on the inclusive inclusivity um, idea. Um, and one of the things, again, that I think we heard a lot through the process of going to districts was. Just making sure that we're listening to the majority of our residents, not just necessarily homeowners, as an example. Um, that are are a population that tends to have norma- normally high historical turnout. Um, and so I think that that's a a net positive for for the community to have that increased diversity of thought, perspective. Um, from different points of view. Um, and I I'm I'm excited to see what that looks like and and work on that experience of better representation within the city of Monterey.
Uh, Tyler, if I can back and ask, um, then I know you you you're thinking is to add to this. But the associations are not formed by the city. So I think it's the association. Association among the neighbors that they 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 decide what they want to do with their board. Um, and they've determined um, a lot of the the direction they have. We do approve of the boundaries, certainly. Um, but I think it's, um, I don't, just don't know that I feel comfortable. In taking that sort of thing on because of the nature and the uniqueness to the association neighborhoods.
Um, so yeah, if if I could just clarify, I I wasn't identifying the need for the city to take that on. I was just identifying the need for us to stay flexible and work within associations and what that looks like in the future. I'm wondering if we can, we have quite a few more questions to 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 go through the process and we can go into, you know, some of the detail, but. Um, I I know Councilor Hafa had a hand raised and perhaps we can go on to some of the other questions if everyone's okay with that.
Um, yeah, but Nat, I want to close that in the thought. Thank you, Tyler. I just think that the addition should be somewhere that. We take the input of the neighborhood associations, just like we would take. Uh, the high engagement from boards and commissions. And I think that's what you're saying, Tyler.
Exactly.
Um, Alan, yeah. Um, Alan? Sound?
Can you hear me?
No, we can hear you.
Sorry, I had the other thing on. So um. You know, this is, I think, related to what may need to change. I think it's worth a conversation of should it change? And that's, um, you know, the boards and commissions and their makeup. Council's gone back and forth over the years with different methods of how we appoint people to boards and commissions. And um, and I'm wondering if this isn't a good time to talk about that and whether it should shift. One thing that occurs to me is the NCIP is unique in that. Although it isn't based on representation by district, it's based on representation by neighborhoods. But to that extent, it guarantees the kind of geographical diversity anyway across the city. Other boards and commissions, I don't know we've ever really looked at in that way. And um, I, for one, I guess I'd be interested to see, based on our districts as they're now drawn. How many people on the various boards and commissions come from various districts? It could be that we have good diverse representation. It could be that we don't. It also occurred, and if we don't, you know, that might be something we want to look at. How do we? How do we address that? Um, it could be that each district uh, council member. Could appoint one person perhaps from their district. I don't know. Um. In any case, I think that's something that we we may want to look at.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Hafa. We've written that down. Very good list here of some big picture questions. And talking about both the opportunities and the risks and what this looks like. So. Uh, very helpful. I think when we talked about what's required. And and it really is only, uh, from I think a legal perspective, uh, Karen can correct me if I'm I'm wrong here, but it's only by the process in which. Individuals are uh, elected and that's by district. Nothing else really is required. Um, as a result of district-based elections. Let's ask the question and maybe go through this piece. What can be done to assure that decisions are made on what's best for the city as a whole and what might help maintain a citywide perspective?
Um, let me just dive in to the, I think that top list is pretty inclusive. And and I think there's answers that are in that top question. I think the theme is the willingness here as a member. Um, the onboarding, it's been mentioned, the new council members. Um, are given appropriate time with um, the mayor, other council members, uh, early. Early uh, team building exercise with new council members. Um, allocating sufficient time with key members of the city staff, certainly the city manager. And and making sure that maybe there's um, a little bit more time. With electeds as they're going in the process. Uh, and I know that's hard because, you know, there's only so much you can do if we have, you know, let's say we have fifteen candidates. Certainly, that would be unwilly. But difficult. But I think if we carve out the dedication that's that says, we want to make sure we don't let any new council members. Um, not have adequate time for the onboarding piece. And I, just like any other organization would, certainly. Uh, so I think the the appropriate amount of time with staff to make sure that they they see how we operate. And hopefully, uh, potential um, council members that are are, you know, going through an election are going to. Come to the city council and watch how it operates and and reach out and communicate with other folks to. To learn how the the culture works, the process, uh, and certainly the business side of being on the city council.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor Smith. Any other thoughts on this question, or we can, we can also move on to other questions if you like as well?
Yeah, let's move to the next one.
Okay, this one, what, so what happens if this is ensuring a fair and inclusive process? If a constituent from someone else's district reaches out to you, what would be the best way to address specific concerns of a district's constituents? And how and when should items be raised to the entire council to ensure awareness of issues that may have citywide impacts? And again, no right or wrong answer here. I see Councilor Hafa's hand is raised first.
And go for it, Alan.
So I just want to say this is kind of a tricky one. Because um, yeah, on the one hand. Uh, a resident should have the right to reach out to any, any council member or mayor. You know, and um, and certainly there are issues that really are citywide. You know, in which case, obviously, they may want to reach out to all of us. And all of us vote. So from that perspective, they may, you know. There may be a benefit to them in trying to communicate with as many of us as possible. On the other hand, and this is where I think it's something that maybe each council needs to talk about. How they want to deal with this because what if um, somebody from Ed's new district, and that I forget, is that district three? Two, were to contact me and I were to sort of get all gung ho about something. And then turns out that the council member who was elected in that district, in this case, Ed. Maybe has different points of view or maybe knows something I don't know. In other words, it could be a way, it could end up creating tension and uh, bad feelings. So I I I honestly, I don't have a great answer to this other than. I think people need to talk about it. Well, if I get an email from somebody in district two, one thing we could do is say, you know what? Um, resident, you know, Mr. Or Miss, um, whatever your last name is, um, council member Ed. Represents your district. Here's how to get ahold of him. Here's the mayor who represents the whole city. Please contact them first. That might be something, I don't know. I don't know if that's the best way. Interested in hearing what you all think, but I, but I do think there is a tension there that we have to be aware of.
Yeah, uh, Alan or Dan, I see your hand. Uh, Dan, you're you're muted.
You would think after two and a half years, I'd know how to do that. But anyway, um. I I agree. Uh, I think that it's going to happen. Because even though everybody in Monterey agrees with Ed, I I understand that. Just joking, Ed. But there's going to be somebody that's going to disagree in your your district. And what's going to happen is you tell them, well, here's my answer. And they're going to go, no, I don't like that answer, so I'm going to move to somebody else and see if I can get a better answer. And and that will happen. Maybe what has to happen in uh, in our in our council. And that's, I think, the the role of the mayor, because he's at large or she's at large, whoever's at large. That that council member in the other district says, you know, I really think you should go talk to the mayor first. And discuss it with him. And then the mayor could go. Then the mayor can go to that that council member in the district and talk to him about uh, the issue or whatever it is. And then I I think that would be a a better way to um. To to alleviate that because I think once you get two council members involved in one district, as Alan says, that could cause. A lot of friction, not just a little bit, but a lot. Um, because I've seen that in uh, schools where one employee will go to one school district. Board member talking about a school district, a school in his district or her district. And that causes a lot of tension within that one school. So uh, that's what the superintendent's for. So what you would do is go talk to the superintendent instead, and the superintendent would try. And work it out. So that's why I think the role of the mayor at large, that's one of the reasons why I think the mayor should be at large. Is because to 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 uh, work with with the different problems like the one that's right here on the on the screen.
Yeah, Dan, um, I would add to that, but the equalizer in this is. Obviously, it starts with respect, mutual respect and mutual. Uh, the positions that a district. Uh, the positions that a district, one district and the other district would have. A working relationship doesn't mean you have to agree or same philosophy, but. Uh, when you talk about, um, and I'll use the concierge service for the community. In other words. Um, you don't just blow somebody off, but you take it serious. You take an email, you take a phone call and you try and drive it to the point where you get a solution. And it gets the initial, it may, it may have to go to staff. So I think the equalizer here is mayor. And the city manager. And I think it may impose on a little more work on a district council member. Um, to listen and carefully know what they're talking about. They know their district, they know their boundaries, they know which side of the street that person may live in. Because it may be a finite kind of thing where one side of the street's District Three. And the other side of the street is District Two. So, but it doesn't mean that we exclude that person's point of view. I think it means that the district that receives it, it has a responsibility to drive it to the point of nearest. Completion or action, and that may be the mayor and it may be the city manager. And it certainly would include the district from, from where the concern is. But I think that it starts with mutual respect and, and a little more, a little bit more work on the council member's side.
So I think also, Ed, um, just to, to add on to that. Um, you may not have a mayor, you may have a mayor that doesn't want to be the referee. And, and that's what, that, that is, that's a problem. So then you have to be disciplined as a council outside of that district. To go in and look at it in a balanced approach and, and talk to the other council member with respect. And say, this is what I'm hearing. Uh, I just want to let you know that. And then those two council members will, will work it out together. Uh, with, with the person that disagrees with the council member that's originally in the district.
Yeah, and certainly over, overriding this inclusive process at the end of the result. We are always responsible to those that elect us. So if, if we wind up not serving very well and not being very responsive. And not answering emails, phone calls, and don't show up meetings, we, we know the consequences. Uh, you're gonna get, you're probably not gonna get reelected. So council member can't blow this off. They have to be engaged.
Serious problem. This, this is a real, real good questions. I like these questions.
I, I could add in a thought here too. And, and of course, it's, it's, I, I think what everybody is saying is, is spot on in regard, particularly in regards to issues that might be specific to the district. Um, and just get us to think about it too, from another perspective, and which is, you know, there might be a constituent that's. Addressing a, uh, a council member from, from another district that might be. Focused on a citywide issue that is, um. That, that, that is of interest to them. And so I just wonder what that looks like in regards to, you know. Create, eh, eh, not being in that category of what we were talking about in regards to creating conflict. Um, just speaking out loud in, in, in regards to kind of how do we just. Describe that difference between kind of district-based issues versus. Um, kind of more, or citywide focused issues, kind of more broader, uh, reach issues.
Yeah, that was my point, Tyler, when I said that I think the first thing the council needs to do is identify those citywide. Citywide ideas or whatever priorities. And that way, everyone knows that those are up for grab. So to speak.
Well, and. We did get that probably, uh, not the next team building, but the time before that where there was a master list of. Um, city projects, some long-term, some short-term. So that, that's probably worth, uh, making sure it's, it's at the ready and it's really. I think that was. Well over a hundred items that was on it. I don't remember what staff called that list, but it's the, the work, work plan. Essentially, it's. All those things that are circulating that are in some sort of process. I think that'll be really helpful for any new member to know.
So just one last thing on that, Tyler. Um, I, I think I know which direction you're going. So let's say, for instance, there's, there's one council member. That is a, a, a real housing advocate. I won't say who it is, but a real housing advocate. And then in another district, there is a project going on that maybe that council member doesn't, or, or, or doesn't think should go there. Sounds familiar, but, um, can that one council member that is an advocate of housing. Uh, step into that person's district and advocate for that project that the council member doesn't agree with. Is that what kind of what we're going there, Tyler?
Well. I guess, and this is kind of where there's gray area, right? Because at the end of the day, and we were discussing this earlier. Um, you know. They're gonna have to be able to count the votes and be able to get the support for, for whatever. But how much in that example that you gave, is it appropriate for? The elected that's being appro, being approached from a different district? How much is it appropriate for them to say, hey, have you checked in with your? Uh, your district representative? Have you checked in with the mayor? Um, you know, that might be inappropriate, at least base response. Not to say that they can't engage in a dialogue with them around what it looks like, because at the end of the day. They're one of the five votes that are gonna help make or break the issue that might be important to them.
Yeah, that, that takes discipline. That's tough sometimes to do that.
Uh, Hans, I see what Hans is the, uh, the key person in all this. Your thoughts?
Yes, thank you so much, um, Vice Mayor Smith. The. First and foremost, I think, um, when a district council member. Needs two other buddies on the council to help him or her to be successful. So I, I need to share with you this kind of district thinking that, that you are expressing right now gives me time to worry. Because, um, if, if a council member see, if, if, if a constituent sees some, sees some, sees something. Uh, of concern for him or her. And, um, that person feels, um, the most comfortable to talk to a council member in a different district. So be it. Uh, it, it, uh, it, I think you don't want to punt it back and say, oh, no, you go to the other person because, uh. District-based elections are not based on the districts. They are based on, on giving, uh, communities of interest a chance to have representation on the. On the, uh, council. And I think council member, um, Ellen Hafa. Uh, pointed it out so, 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 uh, appropriately when he said, but the reality is. And, and he, he said it that way, uh, with respect when you said the reality is they are still part of the district. And so it, I think it's important for you, the council, to balance that. Um, I cannot look away when, when somebody comes to me and says something about a topic and I'm like, yeah, that's not our deal. Go, go, go to Caltrans, you know? Uh, I cannot look away when, when, when we get, when we get an issue about something else and just say, not in my job description, it's not the city. We, we need to help. And I think the same is for the districts. So I just want to urge the council or caution the council to not really. Um, look at, look at that with respect, like a chain of command or something. You need to work together. And, uh, and it's a team sport, uh, as, as I always share with the council members. Uh, also running the operations of the city, which is my job, is for me a team sport. I, I am listening to every single one of you. And, and that's the same. So I just want to be, um, issuing that kind of, um, input at, at this time because, uh. Um, like I said, eh, eh, there's the reality, but there's the balance. And I think you don't want to draw artificial balances. If somebody feels comfortable to talk to you, talk to that person. Who cares? It's not the vote you will get because this person might be in a different district. But it's, it's, it's showing that, that the overall good of Monterey is, 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 is at stake here. So, so that's just what I wanted to, to comment, uh, and, uh, thank you for, for allowing me to speak, Vice Mayor Smith.
Um, Hans, I want to go on something I reminded that is in the spirit of what you just said. Um, and that's, uh, Dan Albert Senior. Pointed the phrase the Monterey Way and supported that with very similar things that you just addressed, which is the. The mentality, the attitude, um, the, the efforts. But it's Monterey first and Monterey solves problems. And I think that's what a lot of people really love about Monterey is that we get stuff done. And our staff does a wonderful job doing that. And as we are in district elections, I can see. That there may be more stuff that comes from districts, but I think overriding that at the bottom of our core belief. It's that Monterey Way should be alive and well. Because there's a, a right way to do things and you can, you can never try and find a, a right way to do a wrong thing. And I think the, the wrong thing to do here would be to start a different culture that disrespects. Uh, citizens' comment or concern just because it doesn't come from my district. And I think those are the things that should drive any council member representing, uh, their coun, their council districts. Is it, we're responsible to fix things and we have to think citywide. And certainly get stuff done at the district level as well. Uh, but I, I think I just. Just remember that Solapli, who was the co-chairman when I was working for the city. Uh, Dan, I see your hand.
Actually, I think Alan was first. Go ahead, Alan.
Alan, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
No worries. Thanks, guys. Um, I was just gonna, just gonna add that, um, it, in fact, it can be really hard sometimes. To identify what is neighborhood-specific versus what is city-wide. So even, let's say you're talking about a project. Yeah, it's located in a particular neighborhood and district. Obviously, it has district-specific impacts. But most of the time, it also has citywide impacts. Housing's a great example of that, right? Yes, a housing project is going to have neighborhood-specific impacts, but it also has citywide impacts. And honestly, that's true of almost everything we, we do. Uh, I, I think I'd be hard-pressed to kind of think of something that really is truly. Only relevant to one specific district. So I guess the long and short of that is, I'm maybe kind of circling back and saying, in a way. I kind of agree with what the city manager said. But again, our new future districtally-elected council members may see it differently. And, and there is just that potential for, for, uh, for rough waters if we're not at least aware of that.
Okay, Ed, I'll make a final comment, then I'm sure that, uh, now probably want to move on. Um, I, I think the thing that, that I'm fearful the most is this, this council is really good at, I think. At, as one voice. We seem to all speak for the city in one voice. And what I'm fearful for is that if we do go to districting, it, it will no longer be one voice. Um, meaning that if we all have priorities and we've agreed to those priorities. If someone in your district doesn't agree to those priorities, will you stick to the discipline of that is our voice? Uh, of the city of Monterey. We all agreed upon this and we're moving towards that goal. Um, so that's, that's one of my fears is that, uh, we no longer are speaking as one voice and that's the city of Monterey.
Well, we don't want to be silent.
No.
Okay, good to go to. We still have a couple more questions. We can skip some of these, but. Uh, one of the questions is when we talk about delivering services with, as one of our council members has mentioned, limited resources. Which we of course have, yeah, in any city, including Monterey, is, uh, what factors and principles have made Monterey successful in the first place? And I think we, we talked about that. Uh, but if anyone has anything they'd like to share in particular, please feel free to do so.
Uh, I see, uh, Alan and, and Dan, you have your.
I would just, I, the, this is, oh, go ahead, Alan.
I was just gonna say that, um, you know, I really wonder if this isn't an opportunity. In future budgeting to kind of look at how we budget and do we, where do our resources go? Now, that may be hard to do. I'm guessing it would be. Some things like, for example, our biggest two spender or two biggest sort of probably expenses are. Public safety, I would guess, you know, police and fire together. And, you know, really, they serve the whole city. So I, I don't know. But, you know, wh, when you're talking about discretionary spending. You know, and probably most of that is NCIP. So, I, I don't know. It's a question, I guess. Maybe the staff would have some insight on this. I do think that this is an opportunity for us. To make sure and kind of double-check that while we are speaking with one voice and we're looking at the whole city. Are we being equitable in the distribution of our resources? I think we are. But I don't know for a fact, I guess.
Sounds like a, a future project for the Navy Postgraduate School. But to look at the results of this thing and our budget. Um, Dan, I see your, your.
Um, so what has made us successful is that, um. For, for me, our, our revenue generating, uh, partner, which is hospitality and, uh. And our small businesses. I mean, that's what's made us really successful because we're able to take that, that funding and move it to services. That no other city has. Um, I mean, look at our recreation department. I mean, no cities have a recreation department that we have. No cities have the parks that we have and the park staff to keep those staffs up. So those are some of the factors that I think really make this city unique. Is that we have the money to do what we need to do to, to, uh, to, to let the neighbors know that you're in a great city to live in. So, uh. I think that's a big one on the list.
Yeah, and I think the temptation may be in some future county that they say, well, last budget, uh, I, my district park got left out and. It could be, we're talking, uh, fifty thousand dollars for equipment and one park got left out and. This district got it. And so quibbling could occur, but I would hope that. The equalizer here is the mayor and the city manager that they're able to really participate in solving some of those, uh, minor disputes. But I think that if we stay focused on, uh, projects that, that come out of a long process with a lot of partners. The toughest one is when we get down to the discretionary dollars in, in the budget. And sometimes, as you know, we see there's not a lot of discretionary dollars in the budget.
That, that also comes down to managing, let's just say parks, for instance, because that's a good example, because we have parks in all of our districts. It, it comes down to managing those parks and making sure that it's equitable. Uh, whatever the maintenance is of those, of those parks, not to put pressure on the staff, but. Uh, making sure that one park is not given more than another park. Or one school is not given more than the other school. So it, it has a lot to do with managing, um, those, those different areas of the district.
Uh, Nat, I think we're ready for it.
Let's go to the next one. Yep, uh, I think we, we talked a little bit about this, uh, Councilmember Hoff, I believe, mentioned. The reality is, the, the question is, from a constituent's expectation standpoint, what might residents expect in the new way of electing council members? Obviously, uh, they may turn to their district, uh, the, the person they may have elected, uh, first. And, and that's understood. Uh, but anything else to add on that one? I know we have a couple more questions.
Uh, I, I think from a first question, I think the question's a fair question and I don't have a specific answer. I have an inclination to think that it's gonna take a while. I think that there's an education process that's going on right now. Um, I think with time, that may get more solidified among our community, our neighbors. I think part of the opportunity for the city council members and the mayor. In the education process is to share our understanding of how we work together as a board. And, and wipe out the parochial division that may occur from, from a, um. Residence perspective, because many other communities are very solidified in terms of. Hard and fast orders in the way they operate and where they have their budgets, especially if you get a new president that comes in. So. I think this with time and education, I think that this will improve the community's expectations and understanding of how a district. Uh, districting operates. Just my inclination. I think it will take a little bit of time. Uh, Dan, your hand is up. Is that from the last?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think of if this is what I want to say or not. I, I think it's very simple for me if I was a, a district. Uh, council member and someone came to me for a project that I didn't think was good for the city of Monterey. I would just say that. I would tell them that, you know, it's a good idea. I like the idea, but I'm not quite sure if it's good for. I'm not quite sure if it's good for all of the city of Monterey. And, and that's, that's a tough thing to tell one of your, your own, uh, district residents, but again, you have to be disciplined to do it, if that's what everybody wants.
Yeah. Um, Alan, I see your hand.
Yeah, here I, I maybe have a little bit of a different point of view than the staff report. Um, so for example, I think the staff report said that council members in their districts shouldn't expect to be able to use city resources to, for example, have, I guess, district-related community meetings. But I think in fact, that's what residents may expect. When there's a project coming into a district that's controversial, I think residents are going to expect perhaps a neighborhood or district meeting. And I think they're probably gonna look to their districted council member to be a leader in putting that together. And I don't think that's completely inappropriate. Now, if it's, if it's about, you know, if it's about self-promotion or campaigning, I think that's very different, but I, I don't think it's inappropriate. I think it is appropriate for council members to be able to you, make use of city resources and staff resources in a reasonable way. Doesn't mean you're doing it all the time, but where there is a genuine controversial issue or project, I think it is appropriate that that council member be given support to facilitate communication between the city staff and the residents in that district. I don't know if I said that well, but I, I, that, that's what I believe.
Um, I, Alan, I can agree with that as long as the projects that, um, that, that the council member is advocating for, the whole council knows about it. It's not done, uh, behind closed doors with the city manager and the city manager budgeting the money for the project, then all of a sudden I find out or somebody finds out that that project was completed without the council knowing. I mean, those little small projects, yeah, but big projects, I think that has to be approved by the, the council.
Um, so Alan, uh, I appreciate your perspective there. I'm not sure if the staff report is necessarily, um, excluded from what your opinion is there. I, the way I read that was, um, when a council member, let's say a future council member, uh, is elected to a particular district, and then they expect that the city manager and staff is having meetings, um, to the benefit of them. So in a, in a term that uses or, or similar activities for self-promotion only in a council member's elected this district. So I, I sort of read that a little different. I hear you, but I guess, uh, maybe that's, uh, for a conversation with the city manager if we have those conflicts, but I would not want to see one district that leverages our city staff to benefit them or only benefit the district. But I would look to, you know, how does it have crossover to all the other districts? And maybe that means it should be opened up to everybody at the city council, then, uh, uh, chambers or, uh, community forum that is inviting everybody from a district. Uh, I would imagine a district-elected council member would find a way to host their own meeting to address. Uh, I would call it a niche for just that district where they they talk to a close circle of folks. Um, but probably would not require city staff time.
And Vice Mayor Smith, would it be okay to move to the next question?
I don't see any other.
If I could just add to the last one?
Yes, Tyler, go ahead.
So, um, I think the question being, um, you know, what the expectation of our residents are. Um, I think it's that open dialogue and communication around this transition to district-based elections, which I think the staff has done a really great job at, at creating that process and using Have Your Say Monterey. I can guarantee though that there's still some residents that will likely get their ballot um, in, in October in the mail and be surprised to see that they can't vote for two council members. So where are those additional opportunities to kind of keep that open communication and dialogue? I'm not sure if there is. I'm just, just putting that out there to just kind of answer that question.
And, and to share with all of you, we, uh, the Monterey County Elections Office, they will have a one-page uh, sheet identifying and talking about what district-based elections is so that it helps inform voters as part of that voter guide.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then la- last question, you know, how can the council continue to work as a cohesive team through the transition? So, uh, any thoughts on teamwork?
Any, um, any thoughts?
Come on, team.
Come on, yeah, any, any thoughts?
Come on, team.
I think it's just about being collegial, right? Which I don't think is, um, gets away from anything in how the council has been managing over this last, these last four years, at least since I've been on the council. I think for the most part, we've been able to kind of maintain that, that culture. And, and I think it's just continuing to show in the transition that um, despite the fa- the fact that some of us live in different districts, we don't have to become territorial. And we can, can kind of maintain that focus on, um, citywide goals and, and outcomes.
Um, yeah, so I just have a comment about the choice of governance, city has always has had, which is a a strong city manager form, government with, um, a mayor citywide and now districts. And the mayor and all the council members have the same vote. So the equilibrium there is that, yes, the mayor runs the meetings and certainly has a, a voice. But at the end of the day, after we go through all the protocols and we invite the public to speak, and we've all had our opportunities to opine on an agenda item, the call for the vote, everybody gets the one vote. So I, I think the system works. I don't think we have to try really hard to, uh, try and invent protocols and countermand. I think part of this is, um, very basic human respect, dignity of others' opinions and allowing other people to voice their opinions. And at the end of the day, after the discussion's all over, then we take the vote. And then when the vote's done, we're still on the council together and we still get along and we still respect each other. So I think that, that the system works. Um, and I think it will, it lends itself to really drill down into what's a cohesive team. A cohesive team is one that is, um, very tolerant of each other and, uh, can deviate from time to time because we have mutual respect for, for each other. And we can also, we're all allowed to be a little bit creative. Then our city manager and staff can kind of reel it in to conceptualize an idea. Uh, so I, I think with a strong, uh, city manager and the mayor form of government where we all have one vote, I, I just think it's a, a good system. It works for a city of thirty thousand. Um, any other thoughts on this last question concerning teamwork?
Assistant Rafa has his hand.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I do think that, um, especially as new, new council members come on board, it's gonna be important for the city manager to come up with sort of team-building opportunities, I think. Another thing we may want to consider, and I'm just again putting it out there, I don't know if, if this is something we should do, but you know, um, MPUSD, the board developed a, a kind of guideline for board interaction and, and kind of ethical behavior. Now admittedly, it came up in an environment where there was a lot of unethical behavior and a lot of bad blood. And, and in some ways, it's a lot harder to develop a kind of, you know, protocol like that when people are already really upset with each other and don't trust each other. Um, so maybe we, we, maybe we want to at least start that, uh, thinking about that before the change happens. Of course, again, three council members in the future could decide they don't like what we come up with, or they want to change it, and that's fine. That's their right. But you know, we have, you know, what we call the Monterey Way, and we've talked about it. And it's really a culture. But sometimes it can help to codify culture in a, in a way so that it's crystal clear for people who may not be as familiar with it. So that's just a thought. We may want to look at that. It's a tricky thing again, because we, five of us may not all agree on everything on that. And that's okay, but you kind of come to the center of what you can agree on as sort of basic ethical and collegial behavior, uh, as expectations.
Alan, all of a sudden, you, you brought up some really horrible memories. Be honest with you. But you know, um, I, I think I agree with the, the fact that those, um, the way you run meetings and the way you act in meetings should, should, uh, be put together before it actually happens. Because once the horses are out of the corral, it's very difficult to get them back on track. So I, I agree that that's maybe something that the new council should do, not us. Um, because, uh, they would have different ideas and, and, um, and values. But I know one value that I think everybody can agree on that will be on that is, is respect. That's probably the, the big key.
Yeah, respect and consent.
Um, I think if, if it's okay with you, council members and, and Vice Mayor Smith, we've got a few more slides just, and this is a perfect segue as we look at codifying and what that might look like for next steps. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Great. Uh, what we like to, to do now is, uh, talk a little bit about the mutually Monterey framework and this, uh, the idea of codifying what, uh, if, if council agrees to, to this framework and what this could look like, uh, the idea behind this concept, what we, what we call it mutually Monterey is because we are talking about and have been discussing mutual respect, uh, talking about, uh, what it means to be mutually collaborative and looking for mutually beneficial solutions to the community's challenges and supporting diversity, equity, and inclusiveness by working together. And what we've done is put together, uh, this, uh, this document. These are what we call proposed principles. You probably can't read them, so I'll zoom in uh, to the actual PDF document. If you all can, uh, hopefully, hopefully see this once I zoom in a little bit more. But, um, the idea behind this is these are principles for the council to, uh, consider as we look at having this one Monterey or mutually Monterey concept. The first one is to reaffirm that the council is committed to working mutually and collaboratively under the council manager form of government and governing as a body that respects the interests of the city as a whole. The second is to recognize that a council member election district is not a political subdivision and that the mayor and council members take an oath to represent the entire city of Monterey and its residents. And that the mayor and council members are committed to making decisions that are in the interest of the entire community, hearing residents from across the city and giving equal consideration to issues and people inside and outside council member election districts. Also, understanding that, uh, democracy means that members of the council may not always agree on issues, but are committed to respecting one another, respecting members of the community and engaging in a healthy debate as we've discussed in the stuff that's been brought up tonight. Respecting that one decision is made, once a decision is made by council, all members of the council and staff will work to support that decision regardless of whether or not one initially supported that decision because we're all committed to a positive outcome for the city. Also, committing to ensure, uh, or committing to continue to fully engage regarding every issue, regardless of which districts may be most directly impacted by that issue. This includes hearing all stakeholders without regard to which district they might reside. Agreeing that decisions regarding resources of the city government, both financial and personnel, will continue to be based on the needs of all residents in the city, not simply divided by districts. City resources will not be used to conduct meetings or similar activities for self-promotion only in a council member's election district, as that would not, not unite our community. We talked about that briefly today. And then continuing to raise issues and concerns using the established process with the city manager or the process to request for an item to be added to a city council agenda. Council members will continue to work through the city manager or city attorney rather than consult other staff. And then last but not least, representing all neighborhoods in Monterey and continuing to work mutually as a city council to represent the greater good. So what we've done is drafted this and put it into a one-page document with, uh, with these proposed principles that, uh, council may choose to consider. Uh, whether that's, uh, looking at that today or perhaps, um, perhaps in the future. And in, in summary, what mutually Monterey is, is reinforcing the idea that council members are elected by residents in their district, but represent all residents in the city. And, and we underline this and italicize it, uh, because we feel this summarizes the mutually Monterey best and perhaps, and hopefully what we've discussed. So what are some of the options for next steps for council to consider as we, uh, close out, uh, the afternoon or the evening here? Some of the recommended practices that we've seen from other communities uh, conducting and, and again, discussed this earlier is just, uh, conducting workshops on annual priorities. We do that as a council. Uh, informing the public about the city's governance structure, protocols, and practices. We talked today about developing policymakers through onboarding for new council members to serve the city as a whole. Providing candidate training and orientation, uh, as Mr. Williamson mentioned this earlier as well. And then communicating clearly about the council manager form of government and the fact that staff direction is provided through the city manager's office. And decisions are made by the policymakers, all of you, the city council members. So our staff recommendation in a nutshell today is, one is uh, perhaps to continue the discussion about unified governance at a future study session or maybe a city council workshop. Uh, council may also choose if you like to proceed to bring forward the core concepts from the mutually Monterey framework as presented, or, or if you like to modify it in, uh, for adoption in the form of resolution. Uh, some cities have taken, uh, this type of framework and have adopted that as, uh, something for the council to consider and for future councils to also consider. And, uh, this is, wraps up the staff presentation this afternoon.
Thank you, Nat. On, uh, this last portion of the presentation and the code of conduct, if we could put that back up for us on the slide, I appreciate that. Uh, the mutually Monterey document you shared with us. Um, council comments on this portion of the presentation. Uh, Alan?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but I think this particular proposal needs some work. At least for me, I, I couldn't support it as it is. There's just a few things that stand out that I would want to have more conversation about. I guess one is the statement that the election districts is not a political subdivision. Practically speaking, it is. I mean, the reality is they are different political subdivisions of the city. I can't vote in district two. Ed can't vote in district four. So I mean, I mean, so I, I, I don't know. I, I get the intent, but I, I, I'm not sure that that is even really factually true. I guess depending on how you define what a political subdivision means. I like the idea of, you know, um, the oath being about representing the, the entire city. Uh, I think that's true and I think that's important. But, um, I also think that somehow in maybe in the next sentence, that they're committed to making decisions that are in the interests of their community as well as the entire community, something like that. Because people in districts are going to expect a councilperson to represent the particular interests of that district. And that's, that's just as real as the desires of mutual Monterey to make sure we don't become parochial. Another thing that kind of stood out was, um, the, about working to support a decision. Um, I, I think that's again, kind of a tricky thing. What does that mean exactly? Does that mean that after a vote, a councilperson who was in the minority of that vote can never publicly say anything, um, contrary about that decision? Uh, it just seems problematic in terms of First Amendment rights on one level, but also practically speaking. I get the intent, the intent, and I think that can be massaged, something like once a decision is made by the city council, you know, um, all members of the city council, um, accept the decision. There's a difference between accepting that that was the will of the majority and actively working to support a decision I may not agree with. I can think of some, and I bet all of us can. So, and then the last thing had to do with the language around city resources and meetings. I do agree that it shouldn't be for I do agree that it shouldn't be for self promotion, but I I I would still like to to see some. I think what I said before that there may be a need at times, and it may be appropriate, maybe with. I don't know. I don't know, but that that I think needs a little bit of of work.
Yeah, and if I may just clarify, this is just the the concept of, okay, here's how we can put all the consensus of the council at a later point of time in some sort of a tenant that that represents those principles. And I just wanted to, yes, absolutely, as we called it a draft. But that would be something again that that would be a good way of of presenting it also in the chamber, presenting it at numerous occasions and kind of reaffirming this. The mutually agreed upon tenants about proposed principles, working on a district based election form of governance. So so thank you for for all the input. You you saw a great deal of that was reflective of some of the points you raised, all of you raised, but you saw also that there's still quite a lot of work to be done to find something that all five of you can agree upon. So thank you for that input.
Yeah, thank you, Hans. I want to reflect on the comments. What I don't want to do tonight is to try and craft this tonight and start. I think this is a good start. And I appreciate a process, a process is very important in this as we collectively, because words have and so we've offered some answers to some of those posed questions. I think we should approach this as a draft as long as this looked at. I think number one, we should make a comment in terms of does mutually Monterey proposed principles resonate with us? And do we see some things that we would want to offer to clarify, enhance? Out and individually, if we chose different words, would it express something that we all agree with? So I think that there's an opportunity to move this ahead. Dan.
Well, thank you, Ed. And just going back to self promotion in the in the document. Well, first of all, I I appreciate the staff being proactive. This is a proactive document, not a reactive document, because if if in the future we do have issues or challenges when it comes to all being on the same page. And again, then we have to craft this document. It it's kind of a negative way of looking at it, because we're reacting to something that's been negative to begin with. So to be proactive, I think that's great. But there are some areas of that, just like Alan, that I haven't really paid a whole lot of attention to. I mean, I haven't read it with 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 a different different eyes, but the one thing that I did did understand was that self promotion to me could be very subjective. I don't think anybody will admit that they're being self promoted. But so I I'm not quite sure about that that comment, because and I'm not sure if that should be in there. I think that's just ethics. And I don't know, to me, I'm not quite sure about that one. But again, this document is a is a policy document, and I'm not sure, because I think there will be three new council members coming up in November, or at least two, depending on who is running. So I I I think we can, we can craft it out, we can talk about it, but I think the new council is really going to be the ones that'll codify it.
Ed, if I can go ahead.
Well, Tyler, go ahead.
So the fourth, I think it's the fourth paragraph. It identifies that all members of the city council and staff will work to support a decision. Well, let me just read it in full so it's clear. So it says respecting that once a decision is made by the council, all members of the city council and staff will work to support that decision. Regardless of whether or not one initially supported that decision. I'm not sure if you know, affirming that you necessarily support a decision, just because the decision has been made by the majority of the council. I'm not sure if that's the appropriate way of phrasing that it could just be taking off respect that at the beginning and saying, once a decision is made by the council, all members of the city council and staff will work just to respect that decision. I mean, I think that might just wordsmithing that a little bit. I don't know exactly what that looks like, so I just wanted to throw that out. And then the next one, committing to continue to fully engage, I think that needs just some wordsmithing. It might just be better to say committing to be engaged, and I'm not sure if even saying fully engaged is necessary, because you know, there might be issues that, yeah, I'll be engaged on if I'm in a district seat. But maybe I don't need to be as engaged as the district representative for that district. So maybe just saying commit committing to be full to be engaged regarding every issue before the council. Regardless of which district, so on and so forth. So maybe just some wordsmithing to that one too.
Tyler, thank you. Hans, what what is your preference in terms of moving forward? And I don't want to cut off anybody else if they have a comment, but we are up against the time. Staff recommendation.
And I'll speak for Hans, he had to make a quick, a quick run. I, our recommendation is to seek guidance. Would we like to come back? One of the best practices is to have a framework, if you will, that might even be adopted for a council before a transition. I know there was some discussion about do we want to have this adopted after? We could at least check in with the, based on the feedback we received on mutually Monterey and the proposed proposed concepts, maybe come back. Whether that's in August or September at a future study session with the recommended updated language based on the feedback tonight, and we could discuss further if if council wants, if council would prefer to to just say, let's hold off until the new year, we we can do that as well. It's a pleasure of the council.
I think I think it would make sense for staff to maybe take some of the input they heard from council tonight. And and maybe use that to to modify some of what you had tonight and then bring it back for another study session. Where we would do a lot more listening to the public, you know, the staff would present kind of, you know, what what you come up with at that time. And then, because I think we also do need to hear a lot more from the public before we kind of formalize this. So I would think that might make sense.
Thank you, Alan. Others comments?
I think just speaking to Alan's point, I know today wasn't maybe necessarily as focused on the public, but are we doing public comment on this?
We still need to take public comment. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so other comments on this before we go to public comment? Okay, sorry, none, seeing none that this is probably a good time to go and receive public comments.
We do have one public commenter and Esther Malkin, please feel free to.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just interested in in how this is going to actually work rather than all this theory. Because a lot of this is sounding good, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's actually going to happen. And again, just a reminder that we have a majority of the residents in the city are renters, and it's not a small majority, sixty six percent. And this system doesn't really help getting them represented. Because unfortunately, the people that have the money and the time to run a campaign and get elected are the ones that represent on the council, so I don't know how much real equity we're going to get out of this. And again, it all sounds good in theory, but you know, the community of interest of renters that are the majority of the residents in the city were not even considered until I mentioned it when you guys started talking about the districts. So I'm hoping that everybody continues to remember that, because it is not just in our city. In most cities, the people that turn out are business owners and homeowners when it comes to county and city meetings. And it's not the renters, so their their voices are rarely heard and their numbers are always less. So it's going to be, you know, if you want this all to sound as inclusive and equitable as it's supposed to be. We need to keep that majority of residents in mind first and foremost, better than we have before. Because we have not been able to do anything really in renter policies because of that. So hopefully that will maybe change. And I I hope that this in theory, it does work out. So I guess that remains to be seen. But that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Nat, any?
Yes, we do have a few more and we'll let Kent Glensor say a few words as well. Welcome, Kent. We asked Kent if you could unmute.
All right, here we go. Sorry about that. Thanks for all this. It's been, it's been really great, you know, as a citizen to to be part of this. I'm just going to make one broad comment, and I don't want anybody to take this personally on either the city staff or on the on the council. But I will tell you, but listening to the last couple of hours of this conversation, mostly what I've been hearing is fear. Most I have been hearing from council members and also from city proposals is we're really worried about these new voices. And we've got to figure out some way to control them so they don't disrupt what we've been doing before. Now, nobody in this call meant to do that, but I'm telling you, listening to it, that's what it sounded like. About eighty percent. So that's all I wanted to say.
And you, Kent? And we're going to hear next from Jean Rash. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. I didn't realize you were going to take public comment, so I'm not really prepared, but I think I owe you my honest reaction. I think the council thinks things are going better than I think they're going or residents think they're going. I don't see you agreeing on on most things, and I don't see you agreeing on serious things. And I I'm not saying that's a problem, but you're kind of portraying that you all get along and that that you all see eye to eye, and that's what I'm hearing today, and and you don't. I also want to share that when I hear the Monterey way, and I've seen it applied, to me, it feels very coercive, as if you want everybody to come to the middle and be good Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and behave. That's the way I feel it applied often. And I think we're coming to a time when we need more strong voices or I don't want to say extreme, because I don't want to portray myself as an extremist or many people, but the answers are need, we need stronger answers. We need more housing. We need a stronger hold on what we're going to do about the homeless. We need we need answers. We 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 can't stay in the middle. We've got to have climate control. We've got to, we have to have more serious constraints on carbon emissions and all the power tools and the garden tools, and we can't stay in the middle. So that's what I hope for the city is that we have stronger urgent voices that really move us into the 21st century. I don't really think that I heard that today, with all respect to all of you, whom all of you I like, and I honor your service. I'm just kind of telling you my truth today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next caller is Robert Brunson. Hi, Robert.
Good afternoon. I am, mine's just a quick comment, and it relates to the section about the principles on the use of resources. And I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that I'm clear on what the intent of that was. But it it sounded like it could be used to say that the city resources really aren't available if you have a sort of a single district project or a single district subject. And that unless a unless a project can be demonstrated to have citywide impact, then don't think you're going to be meeting at a rec center, or don't think you're going to be meeting at city hall, because that's too district focused and could potentially even be seen as self promoting, because we happen to have council members who represent those districts. So I think I think you want to be really careful about carving it up so narrowly that suddenly city resources aren't available for city business, just because of, you know, sort of an artificial boundary application that really limits what we do as a as a city. So that was my my main comment. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Robert. All right, that concludes public comment online. And Clementine, is there anyone in the council chambers?
We have no public commenters in the chamber right now.
Back to Vice Mayor Smith. You're muted, Ed. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I want to turn to have any closing comments, and I think that will include your preference for moving. What would it look like to you? Okay, we got any personal comment?
All right, well, I guess I'll go ahead and kind of repeat what I said before. I I think that this is worth doing. I do think the comments from the public were were well put and on point, actually. I mean, there's just sort of a natural tendency for an organization and leaders, those of us who are here on council and 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 in upper management, to to be comfortable with the way we've done things and to kind of want to make sure it doesn't change too much. But the reality is that with new voices, there's going to be new ideas and perhaps even a desire to do things differently. And we're going to have to, the city is going to have to adjust to that. On the other hand, if we can really capture what it is that that the whole community really believes is sort of the way we should do things as a city and 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 captures our sort of universal values as a city. I think that totally makes sense to to adopt and reinforce. So I I won't get into my the specifics, but I think maybe staff should take kind of the feedback from council and and the public. Come back with something and we have another 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 forum like this, and maybe we also even try to get the public commenting a little bit more on the front end. But I do think we want to do something. I do think we should adopt something, and I think it should happen before the new council. Of course, a new council can change it, but I but but I think it's good to have something in place.
Thank you, Alan. Others?
I I I appreciate, I appreciated hearing the the public input, and I think that it is important for us to make sure that we're including language of our embrace of us embracing the the transfer to district based elections. I think we have to be careful not to make it appear as if we're we're being resistant to or that we're in fear of. So I think that that was really good public input, because again, this is I I I personally feel like this is going to allow the city to make better decisions from a more diverse perspective, and and I think that has to be embraced.
Thanks, Tyler. Okay, just a couple of thoughts. Appreciate the callers. And I think I would say that doing what we started tonight may look clunky. And because it's difficult. A lot of the elements we were talking about is a philosophy and personal belief system and approaches and preferences. And everyone has their own, and everyone has their own style. And I think this is a start of a collaborative effort. I think what we saw tonight was a a great initiative by the city staff, and thank you very much, as Dan has indicated. I think it is proactive, and I what I'm hearing from everybody else is that they're they're willing to work through this to get the language right where it feels right, where it's a true and accurate statement. To get the language right where it feels right, where it's a true and accurate statement. And certainly, we want the public to be able to participate in this as they are our bosses. They're the ones that speak, they're the ones that elect us. And they are the ones that have the strongest opinion. So I think if we can work together and schedule this in a in a future meeting to make sure that we have. More comments from our public and get it to the mode where we're we're drafting and getting to agreements. And content, I think we'll we'll wind up with a document that will give us some guiding future. One thing I would say that I've heard this before in some of the training through California League of Cities. And much of the transitions that take place with council members. Going into elections, I think it's much easier for us to to be able to have this document. Prepared for those that join the council. But as those that join the council, they certainly have an opportunity to add to this and redirect. And I think this is a document that's ongoing that will be approached more than just this one time and then just hung on a wall, and that's forever and ever. As a constitution, I think that this will be the kind of document that would morph into a statement. Of content and tenants that represent every council as they move forward. City manager, any other comments? Have we accomplished everything that we were tasked to do tonight?
Thank you so much. No, this was very helpful, and I want to just echo what what you all said. The feedback from the public was very helpful and informative and will guide us as well. So. We will come back with that as as I think that's kind of the consensus here of the group, and hopefully we'll we'll hit all the right notes and you might. Get more input and then we'll hopefully launch it prior to the elections as well. Thank you for that.
Great. Well, you mentioned notes, but I'm not sure everybody would agree in the kind of music they like. So that is the challenge in my document. But I think this council can get there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.